Like the meeting's order, the full board present, Tom Administrator's here and Leo is recording this in the event of the public. Gentlemen, I've got some old business here.
I'll make a motion to approve the seventeen Merkle minutes of November eighteen as written.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion?
Well done again this week.
Yeah, I read it and I didn't see any changes, Lee.
You're going to vote.
Oh, was it made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna go up to a quick public comment. Anybody from the public has anything they'd like to say at the beginning of our meeting?
Looks like it's gonna be a long meeting, so I'll skip it.
Okay. Nate, you have anything at the beginning? So gentlemen are on this agenda. Okay, the first thing on our agenda is a bid opening of the sprinkler system for the town hall and library building. So I'm gonna bring the bids here out. We all have a evaluation form. We had many, many companies interested. We had, I think, six scheduled for the site plan. And I'll give you the other two selected, we'll go ahead and open that. And what we'll probably do is open them, review them quickly, and move on to the rest of our agenda, finish up our depth research of those bids later in our meeting, not to hold up the whole night. You have Superior, I think?
Industrial, well wait a minute.
Superior, yep.
John Carter.
So you have John Carter from Dunkley Road and Bow?
Yes.
Okay. And Tri-State Sentinel bid. We had, after the walkthrough, we had four companies notify us, three and right away and one today, that they weren't able to bid it because of either something on the specification and/or not being able to do it in a timely fashion, so. You guys get to the bottom of your bid and have a total, I guess, we can write that in here. And as you can see, they're pretty substantial, so we'll probably, we may not even make a decision tonight, we'll...
I agree, I like that just, I think we'd be worth a lot of poozies at night.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna pass that through for the moment. Can we announce the amount of time or should we keep that quiet?
Nope, this is a bid opening, so.
This was, this one, without looking at the details, it was one forty-eight plus ninety-eight hundred, another ten grand approximately, ninety-eight hundred dollars for a modification they recommended.
Was that one hundred and forty-eight?
One forty-eight, six-ten.
Yeah, from John L. Carter Sprinkler Company. The base price for the dry sprinkler protection of the entire existing building, ten thousand gallons of water storage in it, inline electric fire pump rated for three hundred gallons per minute. And their note, quick note, was to add ninety-eight hundred for nitrogen generator to mitigate pipe corrosion, recommended. Okay, so I'm just gonna put down on that one there, one forty-eight, six-ten, plus possible ninety-eight hundred. Bob, were you able to find the total?
Yep, oh yeah, eighty-two, three-fifty.
Eighty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty.
Correct.
Any additional add-ons on that one?
Nope, I went all the way through and this final page here is eighty-two, three-fifty again.
It looks like this may be multiple copies, I might be able to deliver you guys, do you have multiple copies as well?
Yeah, the bid request four copies, so I don't know.
So here Mike is here.
So it's, that's what it is, eighty-two, three-fifty, Bob. Yeah.
That one's been moved. Now it's handed right over to Mike.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Can we defer a decision to next week so we can, have you agree, or later on tonight?
I would think later on this evening, we might be able to get this done, Mike.
Okay.
And Lee, I'm gonna put a package together here for you.
Yep, this should be before we keep in the office.
And then our will be here. Okay, so those are the dollar amounts, so then we have the bid opening and we'll review that plan we wanna read through and make sure it meets all of our specifications. And it's already been reviewed by the fire department, the chief. So before we went out to bid, that was reviewed with him as well to make sure that we met all the requirements he needed. I left our entire package. I'm not gonna read the companies that didn't bid with us. We noticed that for seven fifteen, so if somebody just walks in, I'll just reread it.
Okay.
Okay, first one on the agenda, we've got a police department budget review sergeant.
Oh, I was wondering where those are.
Oh, you know, they're sport cars.
There you go.
Thank you.
You got one extra, does anyone?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. How's everybody doing?
We were doing good.
Well, I have good news for you.
Okay.
So, our budget this year was forty-two, two-eighty-nine. The budget that I put together for twenty-twenty-two proposes four-eight-seven-zero-nine-one, which is a forty-eight hundred dollar increase, just shy of a one percent overall budget increase. I wanted to be very fiscally responsible, especially coming in as my first year. But more importantly, there were some cost savings within the budget because we were going from a fifty-three week pay year this year to a fifty-two week pay year next year. There's also a significant amount of savings due to the promotions that are taking place for the chief and the sergeant, so. With those cost savings, we were able to absorb quite a bit of cost of the contractual increases. I broke it down on the front of personnel increases, contractual and discretionary. And with those increases, again, overall, there's still just a forty-eight hundred dollar increase overall because of the additional cost savings within the budget. So if it's okay with the board, I'll just, I'll go line by line, do the budget narrative, just to kinda give a quick gloss over and then if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Did you get your three percent in here?
Yes, yep. So full-time crime control, that actually went down nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars because of those aforementioned reasons. I have everyone in here, including Chief's clue for his three weeks in January, salaried three weeks. Again, these all include the three, proposed three percent wage increase. One of the things that you'll see at the bottom regarding the officer in charge stipend, I have a proposal in here to increase Sergeant Tyler's stipend from twelve hundred up to two thousand. The reason being is when I take over, I'll still be in the OIC rotation, but because I'm salaried, I won't be getting that stipend. So currently, it's twenty-four hundred dollars a year for Brian and I, the OIC stipend. And I'm proposing that some of those cost savings go to Brian when he is promoted to sergeant. It's a very time-consuming process to be OIC. We currently rotate it every other week where you're essentially tied to your phone and have to beck and call if something comes in and you're not on duty, responding into assist on-duty officers, so I felt it was appropriate to compensate that stipend a little bit more. And there still is savings there because I won't be receiving it.
Is, who else receives it right now?
Just Brian and I.
Just you guys?
Yeah, so it's twenty-four hundred dollars a year total now. It would go down, if accepted, to two thousand dollars a year because I won't be receiving it as a salaried employee, which is completely fine. I just wanted to try and compensate Brian a little bit more for that responsibility. Full-time crime control, overtime on the next page, I usually just factor in what the wage increase is, so that's a three-hundred-and-ninety-two dollar increase. Crime control holiday pay, that actually went down a little bit just because of the changing pay rates. It does include the three percent wage increase, but because Brian's coming in as step-one sergeant, where as I'm step-three sergeant right now, there's some savings in there. Crime control part-time, that went up nineteen forty-four. That includes a three percent wage increase. And I also wanted to increase some of our discretionary part-time hours. I increased that by sixty-four hours. You'll see the part-time hour breakdown, it's pretty much remained the same for the last couple of years, but I wanted to increase the discretionary hours a little bit because our part-timers have increasingly been helping us more with community events. And I just, I wanted to have a little bit more hours in there for unexpected or unplanned circumstances, including COVID-nineteen. If we have a member that has to quarantine or comes down sick and we have to backfill shifts, those additional hours would be helpful. Training hours remain the same, I just consolidated them all into one category, our in-service monthly training. The next budget line, part-time office administrator. So this line this year was for Officer Tompkins, the new full-time officer that was hired in anticipation of the chief's retirement, so when he retires and everybody moves up, Officer Tompkins fills that fifth position. What I'd like to do is re-implement our part-time office administrator position, that's been vacant since April of twenty-twenty. You'll see in there, it's a thirty-four-and-a-half hour a week position, so it is part-time. We wanna hire somebody with relevant training and experience, so I budgeted for step-three, which is the top step, equivalent to five years of relevant experience. And I have a proposed start date of May first of twenty-twenty-two for that. And obviously, that line would increase in twenty-twenty-three to reflect the full year.
I'm only concerned, why May first? Why, why, it's half the year's gone already?
Well, I wanted to give us, I have a candidate in mind, but if that candidate doesn't work out, I wanna make sure that we had ample time to advertise and put somebody through the hiring process.
And just that, in January and February, you guys going through a lot of changes already within the department, so it could get past some of them changes first.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we had the part-time office administrator position for years. That evolved into the part-time detective position. I'm looking to strictly keep this a non-s sworn position, meaning it wouldn't be a police officer position. But Brian and I are getting killed in the office right now. We don't have an office administrator, so all the invoices, all the billing, walk-ins, telephone calls, stuff like that, is really bogging us down, so.
Can't believe you guys have done it this, that long. And I know the reason why it was done initially and it's been a long time coming. I think that's a good need to fill out position, really.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's much needed. We've made do, given the circumstances that we're in, and we've been happy to do it, but it's certainly not sustainable.
And if you look at Lee's job, she tried to do without her, you know, part-time, but they're trying to cover some of that paperwork for that day-to-day stuff.
That stuff really adds up and, and the problem is, it takes us away from time on investigations and other police matters and, and really, we don't mind doing the work, but it would really be helpful to have someone in there dedicated, but also...
Get somebody paid at this scale doing that type of work as well, you know, for the town, it's a benefit to the town paying somebody who will lower some pay scale.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, the other thing from a customer service standpoint for residents, the office administrator position is generally the first point of contact they have with the police department. So if somebody comes to the police department, they're meeting with the office administrator, whether it's filing paperwork, filing a report, or answering telephone calls. So from a customer service standpoint for residents here in town, I think it's also a huge benefit because, you know, there's times where we, we're not in the building because we're out on a call. And it may be two o'clock in the afternoon and someone comes to the police station and the door is locked. It's just the nature of the beast because we're out on patrol or we're handling a call for service, so. I think that would be, getting that back would be a tremendous help for us operationally within the building.
And you're looking to start at the step-three?
Yeah, ideally, I'd like to hire somebody with, with relevant training experience.
Where are you gonna be able to go with them after that, though?
Step-three is the top step, so any subsequent wage increases would be at the behest of the board in the town meeting process.
Just wanna make sure you're aware of that, 'cause sometimes if there's no place to go, it gets difficult.
Absolutely, yeah, yep.
No growth.
So, going on to the next page, supplies and training, those remain level-funded, no change. Prosecution, much to my surprise, I realized that I had been incorrectly calculating that, so that actually went down. That's a contractual service, but the Concord City Prosecutors, obviously, we've been with them for over twenty years, I believe. And I put right in there, the annual cost was incorrectly calculated previously, so there's some cost savings there.
That's much cheaper than I expected it would be.
It's a, it's a tremendous bargain, it really is. They, they, I would say probably ninety to ninety-five percent of our caseload, they prosecute. It's a, it's a tremendous bargain for the town, and I do an outstanding job. Computer hardware, that stayed level-funded. Gasoline, that was kind of a tricky one, I really went back and forth with that one. I increased it by a thousand dollars, just based on anticipated fuel prices. I know that those are subject to change, they could go up, they could go down. It's a very fluid market right now.
What about hay, hay prices?
Yeah, for the horse.
For the horse.
So I did increase that by a thousand dollars, just, just based on the anticipated current gas rates staying the same or slightly fluctuating. I just wanna make sure we didn't pigeonhole ourselves into a position where we're running out of fuel money towards the end of the year.
You can go down that road, but you gotta fire it.
Police dispatch, that did go up, forty-seven, seventy-five, we had previously spoke about that, about the contract and the costs that were being absorbed by GOFs that they're passing off to us. Computer software, that stayed the same. We had originally wanted to get an additional mobile license for an MDT, a mobile data terminal, but what we did is, we decided we're gonna take one of our mobile data terminals from one car, that's actually now out of service, and put it in a different car. So that money assists us with, we have scheduling and personnel tracking software that we have, that's really streamlined some of our office operations, as well as Adobe PDF redaction software for all of our write-to-know requests, which have become pretty voluminous. And having that software really helps streamline redacting documents instead of using a Sharpie and copy method that we were using before. IMC contract, that's contractual, that went up one thousand, seventy-six. That's our records management system, so all of our records that we maintain is through, it's called IMC, and that's contractual. Telephone, that's level-funded. That's our automated vehicle locator, cell phones, station telephones, and then the cellular service for our mobile data terminals inside the police vehicles. Vehicle maintenance, we kept that level-funded. Department equipment, level-funded. The important thing about department equipment, tasers are extremely expensive and they have a five-year recommended life cycle, which is also their recommended warranty period, so we're trying to replace some of our older tasers that are in the field and outside of that five-year life cycle. So that allows us to purchase those incrementally to replace our older tasers.
Or the old ones go into training?
Yeah, we use it for training only, yeah. And even at that, I don't know if I'm comfortable with using some of them. Fees and services, I increased that by three thousand, the reason being that would allow us to achieve membership in what's called the Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit. And basically, the, it's formally referred to as the SOU. And they're a huge resource and force multiplier during higher-risk incidents or other incidents requiring a lot of manpower. It could be something such as a missing child or a missing vulnerable adult. They have a lot of people and resources that are part of that team, and they pool all of these resources from multiple towns. Currently, we utilize the state police SWAT team, and you're kind of at the behest of troopers that may or may not be in the area, whereas SOU is made of, made up of local police officers and generally, they can have a faster response time. But more importantly, this would give our members an opportunity to grow professionally, participate in a specialized assignment. And it's a huge retention tool, and you can see some of the towns that are currently members that I put in, in there, Bradford, Southern, Hennecker, those are just a few towns that are part of this, so there are towns bigger than us and towns smaller than us that are member agencies, so. This is something I've wanted to do for a long time, so I wanted to propose this as part of this budget cycle.
So that's around three thousand dollars?
It's three thousand dollars a year for membership, and the nice thing is they pay for any tuition-based training, they provide all of the equipment. Just three thousand dollars is a membership fee, and you can have as many, as many members of your agency on the team as you want, it's still just that three thousand dollar fee.
How much time will this take officers away from our town requirements? Is more what I would like to know, you know, how much, how much time you see the guys putting in?
Yeah, it's, it's tough to know. There are some initial training requirements. There's some SWAT training, I think that's one or two weeks at a time. Yeah, so there are initial training requirements. They do have call-outs where, you know, an officer could be off-duty and they get called in. But a lot of their operations are also pre-planned, so that's something that we can schedule for in advance. As far as actual numbers, I'm not entirely sure. If the board wants to know more, there is a presentation that they'll actually come and do for boards of selectmen to provide some more information and context about what the team does and the resources that it can provide.
You know, I want you guys to be able to grow, but I think that the presentation would help us as selectmen, in case somebody comes to ask us, 'cause every additional thing we do with a small department, somebody's gone for two weeks for learning or training or, you know, it just takes away from somebody being here in Dunbar, so I wanna be careful now.
Absolutely, and, and one of the things that we would make sure of is, you know, it wouldn't detract from patrol coverage, meaning we wouldn't not staff patrol shifts so someone could go to training or go on a call-out. We would, we would be sure of that. If there was a call-out and an officer who's trained on the SOU is on patrol, they just, they can't go. That's just the nature of the beast. We would never detract services from the town for the sake of the team. That, that's a certainty.
Maybe we could have some come in maybe late February, early March, before the town meeting?
Yeah, I could absolutely set that up. I'll talk with Lee and...
After we get to a budget approval?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm more than happy to have one of the team members come in and present to the board. It would be good for me, too. I've talked to them peripherally, but I'd like to see the presentation myself to learn more about it as well.
After our busy, after we get it pretty much approved?
Yeah, and it's in his budget, so I think we're good with it, we'd just like to get some understanding.
Of course, I can appreciate that, absolutely.
Well, and, and so we're knowledgeable to defend it if we have to at town.
Right. Well, not only at town meeting, but at, in the rest of the balance of the year.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, and Leo?
Yeah, so in other words, this contract would not go in effect until after the presentation, until after, that's not accepted, am I correct?
Well, he's got it in his budget, so...
Yeah, I understand that part, but my point is, it's in the budget, but the budget won't be voted on until March. So in other words, this contract does not, would not go into effect till March.
That's correct.
Therefore, the board would have a chance to look at it and see if it was valuable or not, you know?
It's a long period to fit in our schedule.
Just wanted to make sure that that was up, what I was...
Yeah, I'm not gonna pursue membership unless and until it's approved by the budget, absolutely, yeah, and the board.
And that's where I was going, I wanted to have it March, but late February, before the town meeting, so we could be knowledgeable.
Yeah, right.
Radio repair, that's level-funded. This, this line thirteen, six-thirty-one, that was our crime prevention line, and I renamed that to body-worn cameras. The body cameras that we have now are no longer being manufactured, they're getting pretty old. And our current method of storage, we self-host everything, which means that we store everything locally at the police department, so officers are responsible for maintaining all of their own footage. And it's become extremely burdensome on officers to maintain their footage in the way that we're doing it. Essentially, there's companies out there that offer cloud-based storage, so they store everything for you. You, you drop the body camera in a docking station, it uploads it to the cloud, you go in and tag your video and you're done. So, most companies offer a five-year contract, so I got three quotes from three different companies, and we'd like to go with Motorola. So the total cost of their five-year contract is eighteen thousand, two-hundred, for an annual cost of three thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars. This includes a one-time fee for equipment and software setup, so they'll actually come in and set up everything at the police department and train all of our personnel. But more importantly, they offer unlimited cloud-based storage. And a lot of municipalities and cities are hesitant to go with body-worn cameras because of the storage costs. And Motorola has the edge on the market right now where they offer unlimited storage, and that was a huge selling point for us. They also do free equipment upgrades and free equipment replacement and warranties and things of that nature, so. I think this is a really good bang for our buck. Body cameras are gonna be mandated at some point. We've had them for five or six years now.
And that was my next question, is are you gonna mandate it for your department?
It's gonna be for full-time staff, yeah, full, full, all full-time staff, myself included, will be wearing one, just like we presently do now. It's, it's really, you've seen the benefit personally. You know, if there's an issue right against the police department, we can quickly either prove or disprove whether something happens. But, you know, I think I speak on behalf of the department, that in this day and age, none of us wanna go on patrol without a body camera. Because it protects us, it protects the people we're dealing with, protects the town, and it's really become an industry standard, there's more and more A and Cs going to them. So we're kind of at a crossroads now where the body cams, like I said, that we have are no longer being manufactured. And self-hosting our storage and our footage is just not working.
I know you said full-time, but there's a lot of part-timers doing weekend coverage. You think you should maybe include them in the...
Currently, we, we don't have any of our part-time staff working regular part-time weekend shifts.
Okay, great.
And when a part-timer is on duty, with the exception of Officer Milliotta right now covering for the chief, they're on with a full-time officer. So if there's an incident requiring a two-officer response, there'll be at least one camera there for sure.
That's reassuring, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, yep. And then uniforms, that's level-funded, at forty-five hundred. That covers body armor replacement, shirts, pants, jackets, boots. Unfortunately, police uniforms are pretty expensive, but we kept that level-funded. So overall, with the ups and downs within the budget itself, again, it's a forty-eight hundred dollar increase, just shy of one percent.
You can't ask for any more level of services than that, I don't think.
No, I think it's more than level service, because he actually, the level budget, but he actually expanded services, we just...
Yeah, so I think, yeah, kudos to you doing this, it's your first time. Vehicles, you're gonna be okay till next year.
So, that's the other thing we wanna talk with the board about. Let me preface this with, we are not going for a full-time officer. But we are in a position right now where we would like to try and get another vehicle in March. There's a couple of reasons for that. Number one is the lead time. The cruiser that we ordered back in March, the new chief's vehicle, as of November, Ford had not even assigned a VIN number to it yet. The only reason we were able to get a cruiser is because the dealership ordered a wrong-colored car for another police department and they didn't want it. So the dealership called me and said, "Hey, would you like it?" And we're talking late November, and I said, "Absolutely, we'll take it." So, the vehicle's currently being outfitted right now, and we should have that road ready by mid to late December. So, given that circumstance, from the time we ordered it to when it's gonna be on the road, it's about nine months. Right now, we have two vehicles in the rotation, both twenty-seventeen Explorers that are around one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and twenty thousand miles. Our concern is that this time next year, those cars are gonna be coming to an impasse of either being no longer feasible to maintain because of high repairs, or maybe we can maintain them as a backup patrol vehicle or a detail car, so it's still generating money. But what we don't wanna do is run into a position where we don't have another car in the rotation, one of these cars goes down, then we're in big trouble. So we're trying to be proactive and trying to be responsible with trying to space these out, so we're not coming all at one year asking for multiple vehicles.
I think it's, with the lead time being as long as it is, I, I would support a...
Yeah, it could be, could be longer with these chips and everything else they're talking about, so. I think that that might be prudent, especially where you're not going for any officers or, right, a part-time and you've got your budget fairly level.
We, we really looked at, Brian and I talked a lot, we kicked it around a lot within the ANC, we looked at our priorities and what we need, and we, we can put off a six-full-time officer, but getting a cruiser right now, I think, is, is being proactive and it's the responsible thing to do. And, you know, I asked the dealership if we ordered a cruiser now, what would the lead time be? He said, maybe you'd have like a late-March build. But with the way COVID's going and the chip shortage and things of that nature, it's really, it's really up in the air. I mean, like I said, the most recent car, it's nine months. Other police departments have ordered cars back in February and they haven't even shown up yet. So I just, I wanna be proactive and make sure that our fleet maintains a state of readiness. And Brian actually has an experience to share with the board to kinda highlight why we wanna make sure these cars aren't getting to the point where they're, they're falling apart.
So about a month or two months ago, I was the only officer on duty and was responding to an emergency call, and the engine ended up seizing probably about halfway there, where I was left steering on the side of the road. And the engine ended up seizing probably about halfway there, where I was left steering on the side of the roof. Um, not a good feeling from my perspective, you know, trying to respond to an emergency call and having a vehicle break down.
How many miles were on that one?
About a hundred and forty-nine, a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
And there was oil in it?
There was oil in it, yep, yep.
Seems strange that that thing sees like that, but I guess stranger things have happened. I've had, I had one happen to one of my company trucks too, so I know how you feel. I get stranded in Henniker and they looked at me like it was my fault for me. I just drive it like I do every day.
It was our twenty-thirteen Explorer, it was being used, um, in a, uh. Brian's capacity, cause he lives here in town, and we were trying to maintain the life of that vehicle by just having one person use it. And that, you know, the Crown Vic, that's gone. Uh, that car D one, the two thousand thirteen, that's out of service. And the chief's car, um, the two thousand eight Taurus, that's gonna be going to auction. Um, probably, and I think they had it in April, I believe. Um, so we're getting rid of three cars, or we'll be getting rid of three cars sold. Um, we just wanna make sure that we're not in a position where, you know, we, we have that potentially happening again. Granted, yes, it's probably an outlier, but we just. I can't, I can't even imagine Brian's thought process trying to get to this person that, that needs help and not being able to, literally not being able to respond. Uh, because the cruiser died on the side of the road.
Keep that, uh, story, uh, live for the town meeting.
We, um, as we get closer to the warrants and the budgets, um, just like you always do, breaking down, you use the vehicles, where you use all that.
Absolutely.
So we have a good background for the meeting.
Of course.
And then we'll check the money in your fund that you put in, the money that we've started to establish.
Absolutely.
You know, we're hoping to get two years, and we haven't, keep draining it, but it is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll break that down. I'm, I'm gonna have Brian speak to that, uh, a little bit at the, uh, the town meeting, if that's okay with the board.
Breaking him in, there we go.
Child by fire.
You'll also get some quotes, cause obviously it'll be higher than we've been fortunate enough to have for two years in a row.
I, uh, I actually did get a quote from the state bid, Irwin, um, and it's pretty much right in line with what we paid this year.
They're keeping those things pretty, pretty flat luckily.
So we did up to fifty-four thousand, we're gonna be like right, just, just below that a little bit with this most recent car, so I would be requesting the same.
We just, we may not have the special duty funds to match, that would be.
Right.
But this, speaking of special duty though, you were gonna present to the board about additional air revenues maybe?
Yeah, at the turn of the year, another thing that I'd like to do is, um, we're gonna do a detailed study about, um, we wanna look at some surrounding towns. And towns that we work details in or have worked details in, uh, and potentially raise that, uh, rate, which would in turn put more money back to the town. Both in the duty fund and the admin fund, um, that goes into the general fund. So I know it doesn't offset completely, but it starts kinda turning it in the right direction to, to boost those funds.
So if we ever get to the two-year program like we planned. You know, those vehicles should be fully funded, and so hopefully we get to a point where we're. You know, we have enough of the vehicles, and maybe this vehicle's the one that does it. We always think.
I know, I know.
It's getting us there, and we keep losing them, so.
I, I felt bad coming with this request. We wanted to make concessions and, and be fiscally responsible, that's why we're not asking for a, a police officer. Um, really the priority at this point is getting a vehicle.
Yeah. Well, I think keeping your budget, uh, as level as you did here, I think is gonna help, so. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. I'm gonna go out of order and, um, the library trustees are here for an open discussion. It was scheduled for eight, but Jeff's not here for the highway department, so. I will hop right to that, uh, library trustee if you guys want. Actually, I think I've got your budget here too, so. What's over here?
No, budget's another, another two weeks away, I think.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, you just love visiting us, huh?
We love to come here.
Alright, um. Mike, you had some concerns last week at the meeting you asked about.
Yeah, I, I just, um, my concern as a member of the public and from other constituents. That here we are in town, in town offices, town garages, uh, town, uh, transfer station. We've opened up in the sense that, uh, we recommend immunizations, and if you don't have immunizations, we recommend you wear masks. And I think, uh, the library has been, we have a full-time position in the library, yet we're opening up. For only five people at a time in the library. And you have to wear masks, even if you're immunized. I mean, I can go to Market Basket, but I can't go to the library without a mask, and. You know, the thing is, where's the science that the library board can tell us we have to wear a mask when I've been immunized? And I just don't understand why we only can have five people in there. We have activities which are, uh, on the common, because you have to do it outside. Whether it be yoga, men's coffee, I think it's a bunch of crap that you're implementing your own standards. And the thing is, I like to know where the science is, and I don't think there is science. I think it's, I think we either open up the library or we close it. And I'll leave it at that. I asked you to respond, at least help, help us wire your being so draconian with closing the library after five people at a time.
Well, we're only twelve hundred square feet, number one. It's a small space. Bookcases don't move, there are no clear sightlines. There are children in there, well, there's been children in there who have not been able to be vaccinated. I don't know people's status, that's why we ask for the masks. It's a closed quarters. We have staggered our staff to keep everyone safe. We've been very safe over there. Um, we have been running. A phased interim service plan with tiered levels.
Yeah, I saw that on the web.
Implemented in response to the changing health conditions present during this pandemic. Um, we are following recommendations from our local, our state, and our national health officials. Agencies and social distancing protocols in twelve hundred square feet.
Well, the thing is, I, I think is, this is less than twelve hundred square feet in here. And so if I was in your building, I have to wear a mask, I couldn't come in, and we have more than enough people in here, more than five, so some people would have to wait outside. That's a little bit, uh, excessive, I think, and I'm socially distanced from you quite a bit right now.
Well, I guess I would say, I appreciate, um, I'm Carol Philmister from, as a library trustee, and I appreciate. Uh, your comments and your concerns. I'm a bit concerned that you believe that our, our processes are a bunch of crap.
I, I, I'll say, I'll retract that, I'll say.
I would appreciate that.
I, I do, I'll retract that. Drakon, drak, we're just draconian.
Well, draconian is even very difficult. I will say, we have a discussion as a board every month when we meet about what our plan is. And I'm happy, uh, with, with Bruce, our other trustee, to bring this back to the board and have a discussion, um, then.
I would be grateful then.
Great, and otherwise, I don't think, we're not here to speak on behalf of the board, we're just here to.
Yeah, but the thing is, I, I'm, I'm venting a little bit, I'll be honest with you, and the thing is, I don't mean to be, um, uh, insulting, and if I am coming across a way, I do apologize. However, I have concerns, and the thing is, uh, because, uh, Mary has taken in the past, has took that library from where it was defunct. To a community center. COVID has created, now has created, become defunct again. And in the sense that, eh, she's tried tremendously, but, um, men's coffee, out in, out in the gazebo area. Or sitting outside, uh, ma- women's yoga, outside, um, five people in the library at one time. It, it just seems a little bit excessive, that's my perception.
Yeah, I understand, and as a, as I was watching Channel Nine this afternoon, I was watching how New Hampshire numbers are higher than they've ever been.
Higher than anywhere in the country.
Anywhere in the country, and I thought, yeah, per capita, and I, and our, and our hospitals are full. And so when you hear that, you think, we're trying to balance the needs of the constituents of, of the library against. You know, what, what can be difficult and, you know, a, a very hard, sometimes political conversation around masking and social distancing. We're doing what we believe is right, and, and I, we, we like to hear from people, certainly. We'll take this back and have a conversation with the board, and we appreciate that.
That's all I ask, I take a better look at it in the sense that, um.
I'm not sure we'll take a better look at it, but we'll review it again.
Okay, because, you know, a- as they say right now, um, I, I have my vaccine, I can go to Market Basket. Whereas they had mask mandates, but they haven't changed their standards, and the thing is, I have more risk of going to, uh, of having six people in the library. I, I won't catch COVID as much as I would go and get it in Market Basket, because Market Basket is crowded to, all the time. Um, I said it as one example, and i- it's just a little frustrating, eh, from a, from a person who enjoys. The services that has been offered by the library, and they haven't cut down so much, and they have, you know.
Cause you know, they really aren't like, we have, our statistics are up, pre-pandemic numbers. We're offering services to people who are immunocompromised, uh, VIP hour for them. Um, curbside pickups for anybody who wants them. They're, they're, they're very popular, grab and go. People are busy, people come in, people enjoy it, people download to, you know, more than ever, they like it. It is, we have persevered over there in a small space. Um, I, 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 um, I am proud of what we've done. I am, I, I really feel as though we've done very, very well. People have enjoyed being outside. The, the family's going to be outside.
When it's cold, it's gonna be different though.
They have asked that we remain outside, and in fact, the moms say, there's no bad weather, there's just the wrong clothes, seriously.
Okay, well, I, I tend to disagree with you a little bit there.
Uh, right, and the other thing to say is the criteria right now for our phase three. Right now, there's no sustained reduction in COVID-nineteen cases in our community for the last fourteen days. The healthcare system currently has no capacity to withstand a moderate outbreak. They're sending people to different states. Um, I don't know how efficient testing has been, I don't know how test returns are coming back. Vaccines, it took me a couple of weeks to get my booster. Um, we have necessary materials, disinfectants, and enough staffing. But eh, eh, we've been safe, staggering and offering what we've been able to do. We're the, one of the smallest libraries in the state. One of the smalls, with a small square foot.
Okay.
With shelves that cannot be moved. I've applied for an art book grant, we will learn that probably by the end of the month. Asking for shelves on wheels that roll away.
Understood. Well, I thank you for coming in, and the thing is, um, I, I've been thinking some of my concerns, I think is, uh, I wanna be, I wanna be respectful. Eh, I wanna be very respectful. But at the same time, I, my concerns are there.
And you're speaking as a selectman or as a private?
Both. Thing is, I, I, I look at the inequities across the town. How we have different standards for different buildings across the town, and this is not twelve hundred square feet in here, and we have s- more than five people in here. Obviously, we'd be violating your standards, so we have different standards for different type meetings. We don't have a mask mandate in here, you have a mask mandate in your building for five people, that's a little ridiculous, and I think in my opinion, if I've been vaccinated. If you don't know the status, you should have at least an honor system, you should at least, as we do, we put a say, if you haven't been vaccinated, put a mask on, we ask people to do that. But the thing is, to protect yourself. So there's, there's some, in, as a selectman, I see. Across the, the board, there are inconsistencies across the board. Maybe we have it wrong and you have it right, I don't know. As a citizen, I just feel like, um, uh, I used to go to men's coffee. I, I'm not a big virtual guy, I don't like doing it virtually, then they went outside, and I don't like sitting outside, um, looking at each other outside. I used to like the, 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 the close-knit, uh, albeit you can't be as close as you can, but with the discussions we used to have as we sat around a table. We don't do that anymore, for obvious reasons, but I just have concerns, and, uh, so some are as a private citizen. Some are as the fact that, as a town official, we don't have a, a unified approach to COVID across the board and across departments. And the thing is, uh, you guys work independently, I respect that, but we should have some uniformity across the departments, I feel. And I'll leave it at that, and I ask you for at least to discuss them on the board, and, uh, maybe get back to us.
I, I have a question. You keep bringing up men's coffee.
That's just one example.
How would you do it? If we opened the library completely, would you have thirteen people around at one table?
Thing is, I'd be, I'd have to look at that a little bit. I'd say if someone didn't feel comfortable, they can wear a mask, I wouldn't mandate a mask.
Look at, look at the average age of the people at coffee hour. Uh, it's well above sixty. That's kind of been the breaking point, even in the news, when they report deaths, they go up below sixty, above sixty. Uh, really, we're following more of the guidelines that the state library recommended. And along with that, you know, just following the numbers.
Okay.
We'll talk about it, and maybe we can work something out, I don't know.
Well, again, those are just concerns, uh, I may not be, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm not, I'm not gladi, I, I'm not all, omniscient. What's that word? Uh, omniscient.
Omnipotent.
Omnipotent. I'm just trying to, uh, uh, express a little concern and perceptions, as some people come to me. But the thing is, I'm bringing it as a private citizen and as a selectman, because we do have inconsistencies. You're in this room, and half of us don't have masks on, and we'd be violating your rules. I'm uncomfortable being here, I'll tell you that right now. Okay, I'm, 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 I'm done, but thank you, I, thank you all for coming in, and, uh, if I sounded disrespectful, please take it back. Okay, that was not my intention. My, I was more of a concern coming from my heart, not from a, a, a area of disrespect. I'm completely respectful, and the thing is, I applaud what that library's director has done for this town, uh, do applaud her, okay? And I hate to see it COVID destroy, or I wanna continue it, eh, and the thing is, she's brought some.
Our library, our library has changed.
Yeah.
It's changed to be with the times. We're open.
Thing is, I understood.
Offering services.
Understood. Okay, I, I'll leave it at that, so, but.
Do other selectmen have concerns?
I have one.
Okay.
I have one, I've got a few complaints. The history room, people can't even go in to read any of the history, it's in that room. Cause it's kind of barricaded with all of the paraphernalia that's in the way. And, uh, I don't know if there's something that can be done, so that that can be more accessible.
All they have to do is call. Call me.
Leo, you had something?
Yeah, it takes fond on that, yeah. Uh, I'm a former member of the DHAC, and it was pretty disheartening to see it's a closet now. There's a lot, a lot of work, hours, hours upon hours that have gone into all of that, that is not accessible anymore. It's a closet. I think all those things could be put somewheres else, um, because that room was created. For the town to be able to access the town history, and that's completely inaccessible at this point.
Good point.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mary, I have nothing else, um, Donna had mentioned that there's still an issue with the water coming down by the doorway.
Well, um.
The Plexiglas that's there is not working or something?
He just installed it last week.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's not, um, it's kind of a short piece, it's not all the way out. Um, it's, it's maybe a little shorter than I originally thought it might be.
I will stop by and see.
First I heard, so I'm not, I've not been able to give him a call.
Yeah, well, it, I, I mean, it, it's just new.
It came, it didn't come from them, I'll leave just here, cause Donna mentioned that there was still an issue over there today. So I figured while they're here, I would ask. Donna, wait.
Oh, um, I think she saw snow flying off the roof, I don't know.
Uh, she was talking about water freezing up by the front door there, or the door you used.
Oh, well, could be, it was slick this morning a little bit, but, oh, I'll ask. It wasn't on the door.
Wasn't, okay.
No.
All right, well, maybe there's some confusion there, but we can just, if you run into issues, don't be afraid to do us a call. If there's other solutions, we could maybe do there, that'll make sure we take care of that. I had talked last year about the larger gutter that would actually catch that water too, but I don't think we ever did any of that.
It bounces off the, the little bucket.
I thought we installed a large gutter there.
I don't know if we did that.
It's kind of short.
Can you check that? There's a gutter there, but it's smaller than, they make an oversized gutter to catch that additional water because of the angle going back on the roof.
They're coming from two directions. It's not just coming off of that, when it comes off, the other one, it bounces.
Yeah, so.
So that, that needs to be corrected, cause it's not only that, but that pileister that goes up the wooden one. It'll rot that bottom again, and I think he'd fix that the last time he painted it.
Okay. Well, if you have issues, just come to us, and we'll try and get it straight away.
Can I share some good news with libraries about this, this proposal you have?
No.
You wanna mention that to them?
Um, I did in our meeting, which I think they, they were at the other day.
Okay, this is, I'm excited, I'm excited, we have a proposal before us, uh, uh, uh. Okay, this is, I'm excited, I'm excited, we have a proposal before us, uh, of a bid to help fix the front steps.
Oh, yes, yes, we.
So I mentioned it last night's meeting when we got the, uh, Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee meeting. I get confused, sometimes I call it a recreation committee meeting. Oh, you brought one in for me, thank you. Seem like I get gifts.
Right, right on camera.
Right, right on camera, yeah, I remember that dude. It's a stain remover, for pleasure. Well, thank you guys for coming in, I appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you on your budget. Thank you for your time. Okay, I think Jeff's not getting.
Yeah, he is.
Jeffrey?
Ah, Jeffrey, Jeff.
Jeff?
Yes.
His mom never called him Jeffrey.
It's only when you get upset with others, did you know that whenever you're upset with your kids, you always use their full name?
Yeah.
His full name is Jeff, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, correct. It's not Jeffrey?
Uh, it was just kinda crowded, it's like, I don't know.
Um, okay. We are in here to review your highway department budget.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a copy of that, Lene?
Yes, we do.
Police department. Okay. Okay, Jeff, it was pretty much the same.
Except we did increase the bottom line. I know you did mention that indicated level services was kind of the goal.
Yeah.
As you're aware, we had a significant increase in the price per ton of road salt. It equates to a twenty-two fifty a ton, and on our estimate of what we use. A thousand tons in a winter season, which expands two years, that equates to about twenty-two five. We don't always use a thousand tons, but that's the number we use, it seems to be a good budgeting number. And so increased it that amount plus another item. Where I guess it's come to light, two things, the first part is road striping increased significantly this year. Uh, it's the the reasoning, I guess, is like everything that's going on. Something to do with the chemicals, availability and all that that produce the paint. And it it wasn't just the vendor we use, it was a standard throughout the industry. And at one of the meetings just recently, within the last month, I think the school board came. Representative from the school board came, they wanted to know about the town's striping.
On the lower.
Their parking lot, right out over there. We were behind the fire station, there are no stripes there as we speak. So I bumped that up to, actually, our our cost of what it costs us to stripe our roads. Went up about four thousand dollars a cell. For that, I so we, I increased that budget line. I don't know on striping that that school parking lot, if that's really our thing or their thing or. I know it's town money, I mean, either way, it's town money, but police department do use a section of it right behind their their building. But ninety-nine percent of the rest of the time, it's all school related activities. But like I said, it basically is taking it out of one pocket versus another. But that's, uh.
If you had a strike, what what additional monies would you recommend for that, if I was to, if you were doing?
Well, I I, you know, I I don't know, fifteen hundred dollars or something, I don't know.
Two thousand be comfortable?
Yeah. But that's why I don't know what's gonna happen next year with the road strikement prices, I don't know if this is just a a bump this year. Or is it gonna be the thing of the future or whatever?
I'm hoping it is, but there's no way of telling.
Yeah, I mean, things happen in my business, we don't know if they're gonna go back down. Yeah, I mean, we'd like to think they're gonna go back down, I mean, they might a little, but who knows?
You see eighteen or twenty percent increase on all these items, it's hard to tell.
I mean, we don't have to strike for a buck.
Yeah, and we haven't striped this one yet either. But like I said, it's just, I don't know if it's, the reasoning I got was probably because of the availability of the chemicals and. You know, I don't know if it's the ship that got stuck in the Suez Canal or the container on the west coast.
The truck drivers.
Being able to find employees or the chemical fire in Texas or what it is. The whole of those common excuses. At the end of the day, we had to have it, we paid an increase. Diesel fuel, I carried a pretty good number last year of twelve thousand dollars. And we're considerably lower this year. But given the the way the market is with that, I carried the same number. And we're hitting an increase right now, it's gone up quite a bit, I think it's probably gonna stay for a while, but.
Uh, just a quite question for curiosity, do contractors doing the snow plow get to use our fuel?
No.
Okay.
Years ago, we used to supply the fuel and then they would reimburse us for us, but we stopped that practice.
Okay.
That does not reflect the November December uses, yeah.
We're up to, did that?
I didn't get into that.
Yeah, you get November's in.
No.
So, yeah, I mean, that's ten months.
And it's usually about fifteen hundred dollars, or it's been fourteen with last month, I think, sorry.
Well, if you, yeah.
Okay.
Thousand.
I mean, if you if you looked at it, six thousand must, six thousand dollars for ten months, ten months. So it could be best eight, eight to ten. Total.
Jeff, I think that, um, I think Lena's reached out to you, but if you're gonna encumber. Some monies left over in your budget.
Yes.
For the following year, you should come to make the selectmen aware of it so that we're doing the right thing for the accounting department.
Yep, that Lena mentioned that to me the other day, and if we have any leftover, I was gonna just do paving.
Okay.
Paving is a pretty easy number to, cause that's a bit of a moving target, cause we still have a month of the year left. And to prepare for it, it's pretty easy, and we can just get a, we buy the asphalt per ton in place. So we can adjust that number easily, we don't have to go get a contract, a set contract or something. We can just say, hey, listen, send us over the paperwork for, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of asphalt. And they'll back it up and do the tonnage, I think it's an easy way to do it.
Oh, it is.
Accounting wise for you.
And it secures the price, right?
Yep, yeah.
Just wanna make sure we do it by the end of the fiscal year so that we can.
But we've been doing that the last couple of years and that vendor and that money seems to work the easiest. Because we can, it's flexible right up to the end of the year. It's just, I think it works.
Yep, yep.
Works for you.
And she, they provide us a quote like they're supposed to.
So that was our anticipation, again, we've still got a year, uh, a month in the year.
Do you still get your old truck for backup truck?
Yeah, we do, uh, we gotta make some decisions on that. Sitting around hasn't helped the old girl, I mean.
I mean, that we do doesn't.
Yeah, we got, we really didn't use it much all this summer, just a couple of times, started it, moved it around. And he was getting it all ready for plowing season, put the plow in and the clutch just got an issue. So it's like.
Put out the bid?
Yeah, well, I mean, do we wanna put, get rid of it or do we wanna keep it?
Well, we can't really put out the bid till it opens up again next year, right, so.
April was the next bid.
The what?
But it wouldn't be good to put in it without the clutch, or can you look at nothing more?
Well, I don't know, that's, it's a, we haven't determined that's exactly what it needs. We'll we'll do a little more investigating.
We're saying bid, but did you mean auction?
Auction, that's.
State auction, yeah.
Yeah, no, we could put it on or advertise it or whatever, one or the other. But I'm, we made out fine last year, we were kinda worried about the new truck because of the, you know, horror stories you hear with it. But it ended up being fine.
Cause you could keep it through one more winter and then, you know, put it out for the state auction too.
Yeah, and it's 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 rusty.
What's the date of the state auction, we just got the money back from the other vehicle?
I think the next one's in April.
Yeah, it's usually April and May and then in the fall.
Yeah.
Fall.
Octoberish, you wanna plan on April, just move it?
I'd just like to make sure he has it for the winter use.
Yeah, that's fine, do you think, would that, is that what we wanna do, put it in a state bid or just advertise it or?
On the state bid, can you put a minimum? No.
I don't put just an overall option.
Yeah.
I I tell you, we did get more for that Crown Vic than I ever thought we would.
Yeah, but say items are selling fairly highly, the one thing about that is, you just take it there, they sell it, they take their buyers' uh. You know, sellers' commission off it and we get the check and that's the end of the story. I mean, if we advertise it, we gotta, you know, deal with some people and.
I think that's an easy way to go, that state bid, it's it's easy, it's easy for our auditors, it's easy for us, it's clean.
Yep, no, I I don't have any problem with it.
And anybody that's interested, go up there and bid on it.
Yeah, and it's, you know, unfortunately, people, when you put things out for sale, sometimes they reach out to you and they, hey, we're gonna come over and look at it. Three o'clock Friday afternoon or whatever, go there and something comes up and they don't make it, so sometimes you're running into that. And this just.
That state auction too, people realize they're buying what they get, what they see is told to them right there at the auction.
Exactly.
It makes sense to be able to use it for the winter.
Yes.
Cause if you let it sit there, it's just gonna keep deteriorating.
And I'd rather send it there as a functioning truck than something that we have to put on there that does not drive, does not go down the road or something.
Well, and that's some of the other mechanical issues as well, I mean, that's not the only.
Well, it'd be worthwhile, maybe to bring it up to speed just so it'd be usable for the winter.
Yeah, if it's something that's not too deep.
Check it out a little closer.
Okay.
I mean, it, I mean, I I was definitely for keeping it for a spare at least for a year, but. That's kind of the reason we bought a new truck too, is cause it had, it had worn out its bulk, so to speak.
So if we do it and then sprint off, and I think that'd be early enough?
Yeah, no, I think that's a reasonable thing.
New to itself, is any huge expenses to it?
No, we, and it may not. Definitely need as much, in my feeling.
One question, separate, can you budget pay more, you're gonna still pursue that this year?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I I got more information on that, if you wanna talk about it.
No, I just, uh, we'll probably, as we go forward, but I just wanna make sure we're making, working towards that, go ahead.
Like I said, I gained prepared to talk about it tonight, if you want to.
Okay, great.
If you want to give us a quick overview on it, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, nothing's cast in stone, I I did a little plumber in there.
Excellent.
Think it puts some stuff on, a way to just look at.
Do you, just wanted you to ask that question, won't you?
Well, no, I, it was disappropriate to bring it up, I even have one to leave. Probably you.
I didn't, I just. Do you wanna read it, or do you want me to start to talk to you about it a little bit, or?
These were your through roads that you determined?
Yes, yeah.
That wouldn't be part of your regular budget?
That would not be part of our regular budget. That's correct.
This would be all executable in one year?
Um, I think from talking to other towns and the paving people. And everybody, it seems like it's a better deal if you spread it over a two-year period.
That's reasonable.
Not to say you have to do the shoulders rate?
Well, we've been summing it out and, uh, as you start to talk, these lists, these numbers are just estimates. For budgeting and it's based on the seventy dollars a ton for asphalt. This year, we pay sixty-eight or are paying sixty-eight something a ton. Nobody's talking about a significant increase next year, but you don't know. You would think it was gonna go up with the asphalt prices, but but doing a project of this size, you get a better price. So I used one that I was, I thought was somewhat adequate for budgeting, but not, you know, not a. Wishful thinking low price and not one to just drive the price up.
You weren't thinking of doing Morse Road?
No, I was not thinking of doing, cause that.
Just a question.
Yeah, um.
I think he could do that under his own budget.
Yeah, that's, these were, I followed through there, larger roads and just do an overlay and a shim. But we would still keep up with some construction or reclaiming and paving. Um, I was thinking the way to to fund it was get the bond. And as you see, if you added all these roads up without going through everyone, it became one point three million. Um, the last roads, Flint Lock Farm, Spurview, Most Point and Long Pond. They could, I feel that they could be backed out fairly easily out of the the number and we could absorb those in the regular operating budget. I feel if we don't move forward with some sort of bond bond, we're gonna be in a tough situation for two reasons. One, we just can't keep up with it, the pavement's gonna deteriorate faster than we can pave it. I was thinking that at this point, we're appropriating a hundred thousand dollars in a warrant article every year to go toward paving.
Plus whatever's in your normal.
Yeah, but we could scratch that hundred thousand dollars from that side and move it to a bond payment. And I don't know what the numbers would come out to, but maybe.
Probably very similar.
Yeah, that's what I, that was my my thought process, I don't, all depends on the number of years and all that. So theoretically, in a simple terms, it would be a wash, instead of appropriating the hundred thousand dollars every year. We'd have to appropriate to pay the bond, granted, that would lock us into that. But moving forward.
Excuse me, I'll get you in a second.
But moving forward, I see the highway department is gonna need to make some changes.
Right.
And this would keep a number out there to improve our roads and a a number that was, you could plan on every year. Highway department is gonna have to expand a little bit, they're gonna need some more employees. Um, one and a half people in the highway department isn't really adequate. Moving forward, we're gonna have to get at least another one-time, full-time employee. And it's getting harder to get some contractors to do snow plowing and such. We're not the only ones feeling problem, the state has that issues, other towns have that issue. And we're probably gonna be saddling, expensive another truck and having the person to drive it and be a year-round employee and all that. So we're gonna have to absorb that somehow too. So I, my thought was, we've we took care of the paving for a length of time and then worked on. Increasing the size of the highway department or supplying more help or equipment or whatever within our operating budget. Without, you know, getting this thing going. Because obviously, if we did all this paving, we'd have either more money to spend out of the operating budget. To fund truck workers or whatever, or back a little up because we wouldn't have to do as much paving.
And we'd have the bunch, if they did the shoulder work and they did the overlay.
Sometimes it's quite a bit easier when they come in with their shoulder machine.
Yeah, it seems.
It's it's pretty efficient, actually. Um, and then to answer Bob's question, and then that's, we're not totally out of out of roads too, we have Morse Road, it needs to be done. Putney Road is in pretty rough shape, that goes from, um, from Robert Rogers to Bow. Things like that, there's always some roads to do, but that was kind of a quick overview. And these numbers are based on, you know, what we feel is an adequate number to overlay those roads at this time.
You'd be, you'd be probably the one speaking to it at a town meeting?
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, I don't wanna bring this forward unless the selectmen support it, you know?
I think that, um, it's coming close to the time to support this, I don't know if this may be the year with everything else we're gonna have on the agenda.
Well, the thing is, this was a, this was a necessity last year, we held off.
No, I I really do, I think that's pretty important.
The other thing too is the interest rates are still really low and for things change so that you decide to do it. When the rates are high, you're gonna pay two different ways.
None of these issues are gonna go away, I mean, the the road construction, and if if we paved these. It's, I hate this, it's not a lib about it, but it's a Band-Aid really, it's temporary, you're always gonna have to rebuild the roads, you're always gonna have to address them. It's just an ongoing thing, I mean, it's just like painting your house, you know? If you so many years, you gotta do it.
We get a couple of comments from the public, Nate, you have a question?
Yeah, two things, um, the first one is a question for, I guess, Jeff. Do you think you can harden these numbers, so when you come to the town with one point three million? And so much work that you're going to get done, that when you put it out to bid, you're not surprised when you, you're not surprised by the numbers?
Well, the the thing that's gonna drive the number is the price per ton for asphalt.
Well, that's.
We, you, nobody's gonna give you a price on asphalt like over the full right now. And when you, when you go to a competitive bidding process is when the number will get fine tuned, but this is, you know, for a budget area.
We're paying sixty-eight a ton now installed, you know, the asphalt, buying installed.
But I I looked, I looked, saw on a construction means catalog, cold patch is going for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars a ton.
That's correct.
But we're not doing cold patch, right?
No, we're, we're paying a good going rate for the asphalt right now, it's the competitive rate we're paying.
Right, I'm just concerned. Right, I'm just concerned that when you get, if you ask for one point three million dollars and you have X amount of roads or miles that you want done, you may not get that.
That, you may not get it, that's correct, it's like any construction project, if the numbers come in higher, you have to scale it back, so we might have to eliminate a road or something.
Right, so you're still shooting for the one point three million and going as far.
You you can't cast a number in stone in November for next year for paving, that's what it's gonna do in two years.
You're still ahead of the game if the price goes up, cause you're getting this much done that you wouldn't have got done. Because the, when the price went up, what you didn't get done is gonna cost more as it goes. So my point is, you're still ahead of the game by by doing what you're doing, I've always been a proponent of the bond, that was years ago when the last select no were here and I thought that was the right way to go. Cause especially now, like Bob said, the rates are really low, so we're saving money in actuality.
We can estimate, the estimated tonnage is pretty close, but even that's a bit of a variable, cause you go out and you look at a road and you say, alright, we're gonna have to put an inch and a half of overlay on it. The road is X number of feet long, X number of feet wide, and you do the mathematics well with the formula, and you can say, alright, it should take a hundred, a thousand fifty tons. Well, actually, when you do it, sometimes it it doesn't come out quite that much, you use a little more or a little less, it's not a perfect science.
And you've done that on these roads?
Yeah, and that's, that's the way a town or the state or whatever bids it is by the ton. You don't do it by, hey, how much for this road, because obviously, they gotta have a cushion, cause if they spend more on asphalt.
People look at a road, they might be scared.
Yeah, exactly, so it's.
So here's the question, you've done these calculations on these roads?
Yes, I I've driven down the measure, and I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that Bonner Hill Road is exactly one point one miles long, but it's pretty close.
The second, the second thing I wanted to ask is, in re, or comment in regards to the subcontractors, how are we procuring the subcontractors?
We would put it out for a bid and they would.
And nobody's responded?
No, we haven't yet.
No, we haven't yet, we haven't foremed, we don't even know if we're gonna do this.
It has to pass first, we have to get the money first and the approval of town vote.
For the subcontractors and talking about.
Oh, you're talking about the operating budget?
Regarding to the paving or regarding what? Back, back to the sub, cause somehow subcontractors got worked into this. It was getting harder to find subcontractors.
No.
That's still removed.
That's for hiring another individual to work for the town.
Got worked into that, they got worked into that somehow.
Well, that was the first subject that we stopped that discussion and brought up this, they asked about the warrant article, if I was gonna do anything about that, and I said, yeah, I prepared a little summary for it and they asked to see it, and I'm just elaborating on that. So when it, when it gets, if it does get to that point, we would say, alright, we're gonna list the roads, we're gonna pay with estimated tonnage, get a hold of several paving companies and have them submit a bid, so much a ton in place, whatever specifications are.
I think, I think Nate, you were, you were talking about procuring subcontractors, working for the town and the plowing instance, like what just talked about there is, say something happens.
We'll backtrack on that, we'll backtrack on that.
Okay.
You can go ahead and talk about paving now, I mean, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that hopefully, one point three million is enough to do all the work that needs to get done.
Me too, it's not enough to do all that we.
I'm just gonna say, I'm talking to you like that.
But it's, it's.
It's starting.
Yeah, it's just, this is just paving, overlaying the road and applying a shoulder.
It's a little more than a Band-Aid, this this went for.
Oh, yeah, no, but I guess, I was losing, using that term loosely, because it never goes away.
It's a gift that keeps on giving.
It, we've gained quite a bit, actually. I feel we have Grapevine Road, Guinea Road is all in very good shape, got a good layers of asphalt on it. There's two new subdivisions off of there, Zachary Drive, Overlook, which were built in the new town spec, not the present town specifications, which are good development roads are in good shape. Old Ford Estates, we've overlaid that, that's top notch, Devil Steps. Old Hockington Road, Fliffin Farms Road, we've kinda narrowed some of these subdivision roads down and brought some of these up, so they're good layer of pavement on and in good shape, which makes it easy to plow in the winter and makes the life better for everybody. These other roads are, are deteriorating fairly fast, actually.
Thank you for coming in, Joe, I appreciate it.
So, I mean, look it over, I mean, that's what I was thinking and, you know, again, if we felt the number was too high, we could kinda adjust it a little bit with some roads, but I would.
Well, for for the record, you've probably, I'll say ninety-nine percent, you have my support of the bond.
Yeah, I I would like to do some sort of bond, but not, not a five hundred thousand dollar one or something like that, I don't think that would.
No, you make it, make it substantial, yes.
Yeah, make it.
Do I research bond rates?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Get a better idea.
Well, I need to work closely with Jeff to help get the language to help the bond.
Yeah, I don't know anything about.
I mean, this is a good number, I think that what our previous auditors have mentioned in the past is that the bond bank will look at our outstanding surplus, any outstanding debt and all the other things, we're in a good spot right now to to get a bond.
Yeah.
So if the rates are right, then I will do some thinking and at least give you that information.
And again, I, these issues aren't gonna, they're not gonna heal themselves, I, they have, they had deteriorated. Alright, if you've had it with me, I'll get out of your hair.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks for entertaining me.
Thank you for keeping it as low as you could.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where my increases are.
They're pretty minor.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a bit of a shock, I didn't see the salt one coming at all, but I guess it makes sense. And as you know, I think the explanation from the vendor was that the the shipping costs have skyrocketed, so.
I'm sure it has, it has with everything else.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be in touch, Jeff.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna go on to the next item on the area here, and this is a quote I got from M P C Construction to do the front steps of the town hall over. And just to, I did, I did loom to this previously, this company I found, I've seen them work on a large, large job sites that I go to. I talked with Bob about him last year, we weren't able to get ahold of him, but I put a little more time in. And just to give a little background on this, Bob has tried, how many companies, well, three, four, five companies last year?
I recall it.
And the last one.
We couldn't get anybody bid on it? Nobody would call any back?
Yeah.
So we have done our bid over a couple of years on this project. But I get this company to come in and I've seen them work in a lot of large job sites and they bring a huge crew in, their office is out of Jaffrey. And everything we're gonna talk about here, they're gonna include the demo, the new concrete and and materials, all of the form ups, and they're also gonna remove all the debris off site. So we're looking at the front stairs and steps on the town hall slash library. They've got the, what they've called the patio porch area, which includes to remove and replace, includes the labor, equipment and materials and dumpsters. That top portion of it is fifteen seven fifty, the stairs, there's two set of arch stairs going in that. And to remove and replace those stairs, including the labor and equipment and materials, is four thousand dollars for both sets. And then the foundation, this is an alternate, uh, cause I asked him to do it, if you look at the front face of the foundation there, it has cracks in it and or chip coming out, and you could prodger that up and try and make it look good, but within a year, it's gonna crack and fall back out. And he suggested he would pin to the old one below grade and pour a new pour right in front of that one, keeping all the curves and everything the same. And that portion is eighty-four hundred, so a total on those front steps was twenty-eight one fifty. And this company has a workforce large enough, they were gonna do the demo by jackhammering that up and removing it by hand and carrying it to the dumpsters.
Hi, Frank. Spring?
Um, this would be spring, so we'd encumber money this year's budget.
Out of our maintenance line, I think.
Yeah, out of our maintenance line, which you planned on.
Can you have the report in front of me?
Yes. Yeah, so that's.
We got a hundred and seventy-two thousand still on our maintenance budget, of which is where the sprinklers would come from as well, so. But we do have numbers on the sprinklers, so we'd still be well under our budget.
You'd still have money left to the end of the year.
Yeah, plenty of it too, so.
I noticed that on myself, yeah, one though, that's if needed, so I think when they take a look at it, it might involve a little less work than what he's figuring out, you know, if you look at the number, you know?
Well, no, if we don't do it, there's no foundation under the porch except for what exists now, but what exists now is all cracked and chipped out in several spots. If you look at the face.
Right.
Underneath the patio, the patio has like a four-inch ledge.
Yeah.
And this is all all newly pitched too, so they're gonna build it up, so it pitches from the building.
No, I realize that, I'm just saying, it looks here that they're gonna do a little more exploring of that. If you read what he said, if needed, so they're probably gonna look at that closer, they'll probably be able to tell a lot better when they take the top off.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say we are gonna need only cause it's not gonna look right.
Cause they they have epoxy cement that isn't gonna come off, they mix it, you know, they'll fix the front. So I'm just saying that this might not be the the.
Worth considering, right?
It might be lower and it might not be.
We could do it up to that amount.
It looks like they'll be able to determine that, I think, when they take.
The demo.
The demo off the top.
Yeah, I I have no problem.
But I, you know, I don't have a problem with the number, because the guy from Ware that was supposed to call me back and the way he talked, it was, that number would have been a lot bigger, but he's never responded, so it's probably a lot more than he thought he could do.
And this is a large enough company with all the proper insurances and a proper workforce and, you know, I see him show up, they've got six, seven trucks and eight, ten, twelve guys get out and they get the job done, the stuff's poured, and then they just leave a few people behind to set the cement, form it after that.
They, you know, to the foundation, they, if it's not, if it's minimal, they can cut a piece out and pin that, they pour that, repour that.
But you're looking at the seams, there's a difference between where they start and finish, when they're talking that eighty-four hundred, it was a new pour around the entire curved section all the way around, from one side of the building all the way around to the other, and then the stairs get put back on.
Yeah, yeah, right, I'm talking about the foundation.
I am too.
Yeah, okay, so if they can cut out a section that's bad and pin that and pour that.
But when you pin it port, they're pouring in front of the old foundation.
Oh, they're pouring the whole thing?
A hole in front of it, so they're pinning it.
Thought you were saying if if they had to.
No, if you look at the foundation there now, it's cracked in several spots, so you take the top off there, right?
Yeah, okay.
They don't wanna remove that old foundation, cause what's in there could be, come out, so they're gonna pour in front of that foundation.
Yeah, okay, so, alright.
So if we don't do it, it's not gonna look good.
Right, okay, so my, that wasn't what I wanted to speak out about, two things was, so that top, you can tell is hollow, it's falling in. So they're gonna fill that compact add and redo it.
And all beveled properly, so it's got pitch away from the building.
Are they gonna, are they doing any control joints into that at all?
They do control joints in all there.
Okay, against the building and where they need to, and, yeah, okay.
It'll be split up.
And and cocked?
Wherever they think it's gonna crack, probably to those beams.
Right, with an industrial caulking or something though, you know? So, okay, I just curious.
I I think this is a repair that was well, a long time overdue.
Yeah.
Well, right now, it's not safe and there's actually some good liability issues.
Yeah, 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 oh, yeah.
Right there in the floor.
Another question, does that need a railing?
Doesn't, anything that's thirty inches and under doesn't need a railing.
Yes, okay.
For code, Lean asked me that today already.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and there was a rail on Park, but eventually it got cut off.
Yeah, I know.
It doesn't need it by code.
Okay, just just wondering, yeah.
So I actually think we should do the front face of it, only so that all the concrete is aged the same and it all looks brand new. If you leave that, if you go look at it, it's chipped out enough.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm just saying that the way he's written this, I think they're gonna be able to tell after they take the top off that this, there is, but they could do that with bag it all the way around.
He thought that.
And it would, it isn't gonna come off.
He thought it might be higher if he took the top off and it wasn't built properly. So, in other words, if if you look at that front edge, and let's say, for instance, it was built with bricks and the front was skimmed on there, right? That wouldn't be adequate enough for him to pin to.
Right.
So when he's saying that in here, he's saying the eighty-four hundred might not be enough if that's not built strong enough to pin to, not less money.
Cause you know how the steps are made.
Yeah, I see.
They have brick backup in them.
Yeah, but the new ones won't, cause they're gonna take them right out.
Right, I know it.
So he was, in the way this is worded, he's thinking, if it's not built properly, it'll be more money than this, not less. So that's why I thought we'd go up to that amount.
Well, I don't have a problem with the amount, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know.
It'd be interesting to see.
Yeah.
When they're doing it, if they do something, they, they offer you something different.
Um, in this calculation, I asked them to figure to put wood planking down and plywood when they do back up on there with the concrete trucks. And the dumpsters, he said, I'm not gonna back the truck here at all, my guys are gonna carry the concrete and put it in the dumpster, so.
I'm I'm ready, I think we should make a motion and accept this, and so, and come to the money now.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a wise idea, we worked a long time trying to get it done.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna tell you, if you try to put it out to bid now, you're gonna have a lot of these people that didn't show up because we went through this for a whole summer.
Okay, Mike, why don't you make the motion?
And I'll make a motion that the town of New Martin accepts the contract proposal from M P C Construction Limited Liability Company in amount of twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars for the maintenance repair of the front porch, the front steps of the library.
Do the patio stairs and foundation like he's got listed.
Okay, now, itemized patio, patio porch removal, replace, includes labor and and materials of fifteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The stairs, two steps of stairs, removal, replace, includes labor and equipment and materials for four thousand dollars for two sets of stairs, as I said. And the foundation, add foundation on the porch if needed, which will also include labor, equipment and materials and for an amount of eighty-four hundred dollars, for a total, again, I say again, twenty-eight thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
No, sorry, the motion been made and seconded, I wanna open up for more discussion, I think Nate, you had a question? And I forgot the other one, so I'm gonna ask you now.
Excuse me, you guys are spend, you guys are proposing to spend a lot of money on the, on the town meeting, the town meeting hall?
Yeah.
What is the end goal?
The end goal is to not have an open liability to the town, right now, if you go look at those steps, Nate, there's big holes and chips out of them where somebody could fall and get hurt.
I'm not saying that it's a bad idea.
But you're asking me what the end goal is, I'm trying to tell you. So the end goal is not to have an open liability to the town where somebody could get hurt and come back and sue the town. Say there's a fire and then they're gonna leave that building out of both exits, when they leave out of there, there's big chips and holes in the steps. It's kinda like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an example, down at the transfer station, for years, that transfer station went on with a one-foot trip lip above dumpsters with glass, construction debris and metal, and then an open eight or ten-foot hole on the other side of the hopper there, with no fence there. That was a huge liability to this entire town, you had no select board before this one brought it up. So that's why when you go there now, you see fences in the, in the way there with rolling gates, so that this town has a reduced liability in that area and we're trying to do the same thing with this building.
It's not only a reduced liability, I'm gonna add, as Bob Martel suggested or noted, there's water invading from the stairs as they're constructed now. We have to make, repair, this is maintenance, we wanna maintain this building, not have to renovate it down the line.
They're pitched in towards the building now, the water's going down in the basin.
Isn't it also so that will, the town can use the building eventually?
Well, eventually, that might be an end goal, but that's not, we would do this irregardless of whether anything happens on the second floor.
Yeah, I I think it's a good idea to 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 lessen the liability for the townspeople, certainly. It it seems like we're spending a lot of money, the next proposal will be the sprinkler system.
We've been doing this, working on this for two years.
Oh, I know, I I understand.
We we got people that won't even call us back to bid this, because it's not a job that not anybody wants, everyone wants to do.
I I was, I've been. I I was con, I've been kinda concerned about that, and you keep putting it out to bid, people are gonna say they're not serious about doing it.
Yeah, well, we don't get anybody to respond.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, it wasn't that we weren't interested, they came and looked at it and then they wouldn't respond to us.
Yeah, well, it could be perceived from, you know, from a contractor's, well, I bid this a year ago, I bid this two years ago. Now it's up to bid again.
No, we haven't had any bids or anything.
They never, they never came to us for the proposal.
Cause we, and we haven't had that kind of situation, usually when we put something out to bid, we end up finding someone to do the work.
Been done, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Okay, did that answer everything, Nate?
Does for now.
Okay. Alright, so, anybody else have any questions on this big proposal? So the motion been made, the motion been seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have the original date, would you sign that, please?
Uh, I guess I will.
Does not have a copy stamp, I'll make sure that I include in the email that they're, they would provide. What would you like from them, a proof of insurance?
Correct.
Do we have any references we wanna check into and the?
You make sure they have an active workers' call.
Okay, workers' call.
Yeah.
And then eventually, like, you know, you say springtime, but let's have an.
An ETA?
ETA, or estimate start date, estimate end date.
Okay, start?
A lot can be weather, if they wanna do it early, weather dependent, which I realize that, but the thing is, I don't wanna wait the next November to have it done.
You gotta leave this right in the agenda thing, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
What's today's date?
Today's the first, uh, second, excuse me.
Uh, twelve two?
David, just wanna say thank you for being persistent on this.
Uh, it took a little time, but we got them.
Yep, that's great. That's been a, that's been a long time.
It has. I was happy to find I see the bid coming, in fact, I got, I got nothing like Bob did, and I called him back, I said, how about that bid now?
It's great, thank you.
Okay, so that's done off of here.
I'll try to speak quick quickly, cause I know we're getting on on time here.
What did you have to speak on, Ernesto?
The next item. Calendars, the regular town meeting calendar deadlines.
Alright.
Ready?
Yeah.
Alright, in front of you, you have three, four months worth of event calendars, um, basically, um, lining, outlining your department proposed budget discussion, um, a small break with the holiday, uh, that's pretty much the December month, just so you have an idea what I have on the horizon. January, we move into, um, my budget review, which would be the remaining budget numbers based on what the other departments provided with you. Um, we also then need to review, um, expenses and revenues, we need to review warrants and kind, and come up with a, a, a firm number for that. I have nothing tentatively scheduled for the twentieth of January, um, but because this is such a short window, January is the month that sets the tone for the public hearing in February. In February, um, February first on Tuesday is the deadline for any, uh, resident that's interested in proposing a, um, petition warrant article, we've had them, um, come before the board in the past.
So on the twentieth, I thought you were gonna do the notice of public hearing, no?
No, it's actually, um, I'm, I'm gonna get to that, so I did check with the school. If you look at the February calendar, petition warrant articles are due by February first. The school is the department element, the school's having their public hearing on the budget on, um, February second, which is a Wednesday, six o'clock. If we need to continue any kind of review, we should consider a workshop on that day as well. Um, Thursday, I am proposing the budget hearing for the budget and the warrant, only because I typically will advertise two meetings, one being the snow date, which is the following week. That pushes the notice of the newspaper for the budget hearing to be uh, no later than the twenty-seventh of January. I typically put it in the Sunday, um, newspaper, so I'll post it a few days early. Uh, the reason for that is because you, by RSA, we have to have at least one public hearing by Friday, the eleventh. Past few years, we've always managed to make it work with the selectmen's meetings on Thursdays. So I'll be advertising the public hearing for February third with snow date on the tenth. And then it jumps right into finalizing the town report, which has a very, very small turnaround. I will be asking all departments to provide their reports to me mid-January some point, I'll come up with a date. Um, the only outstanding items will be the, um, money items, which will be, um, discussed during the public hearings. And that will, um, require that I work a little bit on the weekend to get a proof turnaround returned to me, and then give the ta, the printing company seven days to turn around the final town report. Uh, I expect to have, um, and if you'll notice on bond, on number, on February twenty-first, if we decide to move forward with the bond, we have to have a public hearing for that as well. And that requires a seven days notice.
Can that be the same day?
No, um, oh, actually, I don't know, I'll have to check into that, but that's the last day that we can have a bond hearing, I can find out if we can do it on the same.
Well, we could, the third or the tenth could be, if we can do it on the same day, it'd be great.
Yeah, try to check on that, I can do that, um, but with that information, um, all of this should be compiled into a final town report. Hopefully, getting that final, uh, report delivered to the town office, where we have to then turn around and bring it to the post office. We have to have dedication of the town report on February twenty-fourth, and then sure, um, uh, the only thing I think I'm missing on here is I have to have the town report, oh yeah, I'm missing it on, March first is when I have to have town report available. So that's the per, the reason for such a short window of getting things put together so quickly, so seven days prior to town meeting, the town report and warrant must be available for the, uh, residents, and then the schools had announced to us that they were having their school district meeting after us this year, which will be, um, that's March twelfth at four P M. So we've got a lot of really.
Wait, you know, the more I think about, you could have the bond hearing at the same time as we do.
I think we might.
Because it's basically called, Dave's gonna call it order, have, have the hearing for the wa, and then bond, I mean, for the, uh, for the budget, then he closes that hearing, then opens up the bond hearing.
That makes sense, I'm gonna look into that definitely, so if you want me to move on that with rates and whatnot.
I'd rather do it early than late, Dave, the bond hearing.
Yeah.
Bob, you on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then with your, uh, fourth month calendar, I did provide you with the NHMA, uh, deadline calendar, and that's more of a, um, RSA reference, why we have to work with those dates. Um, a lot of it is, uh, giving the public seven days notice, you need to have, um, holding hearing so many days before town meeting. So it's all tied into the deadlines and it's like, provides you in that report there. I just wanted to go over that with you guys.
Thank you.
And I would be putting a lot of pressure on you to stay on track here.
Okay, I'm gonna hit the mailbox items quickly here, I think. Um, let's see if the stuff are later. You all set, Lean?
Aye, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, we have a letter that Eric Window has written in reference to, um, one of our employees asking about, um, payroll processing disagreement. Um, I think we'll be talking about that a little further later on tonight, but um, that's in here. We have a heads up from the transfer station. Uh, department head, uh, one of the large lights burnt out, be contacting electrician. Um, and they're gonna fix some other lights there at the same time. I think I gave him an email and said that was a good idea earlier in the week, thanks for the heads up. So hopefully, we get some pricing in on that and we'll act on that as we see it. Um, we have a time clock policy here that we talked about at our last meeting that needs our signatures, so I'd like to sign that if we could. Lean has given us a copy of accrued time liability, uh, to the town. Um, we've got employees that have vacation, uh, floating holidays and earn time. It has to be used by the end of the year, if it's not, they have to come to the selectman. Um, if they don't get a check for the time to carry something over, it's only by selectman's approval. She's already sent the notice out to the people that have it. And I'd like to make sure that we, uh, follow up on that and get that done. We have one of our town office employees asking for some vacation time, which was approved and signed. Uh, we have another town employee here at the town offices that is gonna be using up, utilizing some, um, accrued time during the Christmas week. And is notifying us that they might have twelve and a half hours left over, twelve point seven five hours left over at the end of the year, they're not sure of that, but they may request the selectman to, uh, pay that out, it looks like. We have a thank you card here from our deputy town clerk thanking us for the Thanksgiving Day gift that we gave to the employees of the town. I have heard several verbal thank yous, which was nice to hear, uh, after this is the second year we've done that, right, Lean?
Mm-hmm.
So, we generally do another one at Christmas time.
I think you're one.
You didn't?
I didn't either, Nate.
You didn't?
Um, we had Lean do a letter last week, we asked her to do one to the Dunbarne telephone, thanking them and their employees for taking the undertaking of the flags around Dunbarne, installing them and taking them down. Would like to sign that letter and get that off to them, thanks for writing that up, Lean. And, uh, we have we have update here of overtime for the transfer station. Uh, their budget for the full-time overtime was a thousand thirty dollars, we're at seventy-two thirty-two, so we wanna keep that in mind as well. And might be talking about that a little later. And that's it, as far as mailbox items. Selectmen, before we go to non-public, is there anything you would like to bring up in front of the public that, that you, um?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Bob, you're good for now, okay? We can do it later, I just wanted to get anything out that you wanted out now.
You may as well get the, the rest of this.
Um, I'm gonna bring it back for public comment before we go into non-public, in case anybody has something they all need.
Yes, uh, after your non-public, maybe some, uh, maybe some personal instruction from you on the budget numbers and how it all works.
If Ken, do you, uh, we could possibly do it now, so you don't have to wait around, it could be an hour in non-public.
Oh, is it that long?
We have two people.
Uh, on the, this budget worksheet here, it says it's budgeted two, two oh two one.
Which, uh, are you looking at transfer station or the?
Highway.
Highway department, okay.
Nate, do you wanna come in and talk to me tomorrow about it, we can, I can give you as much time as you need. Cause there's probably more information you can get from me when you're here.
One-on-one.
I don't have a problem doing that, Fridays are somewhat quiet, I'm not here the whole day.
It, it may be, I may, I may need a lot, I may need a lot of.
Time?
Instruction on it.
That's fine, uh, I don't.
But I was, I was just looking at the budgeted and the actual.
Okay, so just to go over it quickly with you.
Yeah.
Um, we got the line items, there are line items, if you see the numbers over in the far right.
Left.
Oh, I'm sorry, far left, those are the numbers our accounting department has for each of the different functions within that town section of budget, like this is highway department. So all of those numbers are a certain line that's part of our accounting team.
And that's the approved budget that we passed in this past March.
Yeah, so the twenty-twenty-one is what was budgeted, and twenty-twenty-one actual is a current one. Not to the end of the year yet, cause we're not quite there, but it's current to today or yesterday.
This is November, December on this one.
Oh, just for fuel, gas.
Oh, just for fuel.
Diesel, I did not get that.
So, that actual budget will still keep coming up until the end of the budget season. This is just for today's review, so we review these two or three times before they actually get into their budget review at the end of the year, so we see what their actual amounts are. So if you're looking at the actual, you'll see they're quite a bit less.
Yeah, oh, quite a bit, yeah.
And you're wondering, why aren't they, they haven't quite got up there and all their bills aren't always in and all that, so.
And just because it's requested does not mean we approve it, we, we, we will discuss it.
I haven't gone, I haven't gone into the two oh oh two.
Okay.
Two oh two two.
And then that, that last column, as Mike just brought up, that's what they just requested in their new budget, so you see um, the lower column there, the five seventy-six oh oh six, what was approved in last March's budget. Right now, he's spent three hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars of it.
Okay.
And, um, his budget he's requesting for next year, which we generally meet with him two or three times, is six hundred one thousand three twenty-nine. And a lot of times, we've gotten down, and depending on how certain departments come in, as you heard earlier, we're gonna need new police cars, sometimes we drop people's budget, to pay for that police car will increase somebody else's budget.
That would be two oh two two.
Yeah, that's exactly requested, and.
No, I'm just, I'm just questioning, two oh two one actual.
Yeah.
And two oh two one budgeted.
We outroll the bills coming in.
Yeah.
They're not all in.
You also have, you still have winter maintenance that is, was projected, but hasn't occurred, you, it doesn't snow, snow till the end of December.
Payrolls outstanding.
Right. You know, doesn't.
Well, absolutely, there's a, there is a buffer there.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Like Bob's alluding to, like, a couple of winters ago, in October, we had thirty-inch storms, twenty-inch storms. And that's in this budget to cover that plowing, but of course, this year, we haven't had that, so, um, there's some.
But, but, you know, that storm didn't cost a hundred and twenty dollars.
No, no.
No, but, variety bills just not in yet.
There is a surplus also that goes into the general fund after, whether they, however they end up using it, either to lower the taxes the next year, or put towards the surplus to town's rainy day fund. So there's, every department might end up with a little bit of the surplus and go back and.
Let me, let me just go back a little bit, so then we have the budget, then we have the actual. At the end of the year, cause the actual number is much lower than the budgeted number, that amount of money goes back to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
One of two ways, what we've done in the last couple of years with Jeff, because that money's already allotted for the highway department, as Jeff was talking about earlier, we encumber that money, say there's fifty thousand dollars on sprint.
Sure, yeah.
We encumber fifty thousand dollars, cause we have sixty-eight dollars a ton for road paving, laden pays. So we'll encumber a certain amount of footage of road to be paved in the following year with this year's funds.
With that price.
Yeah, to give them extra.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good, but.
So, so that's how we generally balance out.
Then that would bring me into the two oh two two.
Mm-hmm.
You might get, you might have to do less paving in that year.
Correct.
Well, not less, typically, what he'll do is he'll be able to pave more roads, because he's got fifty thousand left from last year, plus the two fifty he's got in there from this year, so he'd have, in all essence, he'd have three hundred thousand that year to pave roads around town.
Yeah, fifty thousand.
He'll encumber that fifty thousand to pave road in two thousand twenty-two.
Correct.
We were allowing department heads.
What would happen to the paved roads that are budgeted for two oh two two? You, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but those would get paved also.
Well, I don't know, when you're hearing him mention some of the roads that haven't been budgeted for. And what happens with two thousand twenty-two, again, with that whole budget, if he doesn't use all that paving money, if there's nothing to pave the following year, it comes back to the town's general fund.
Okay.
And then, that's like that for all the departments, police department has in there, you know, six hundred thousand dollars, they spend five hundred fifty. That fifty thousand dollars, if it doesn't get encumbered for some expense that they already have, comes back to the town's general budget. And that's why when we go to town meeting, you'll see, like, last year, we took two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars of excess revenues. We applied it to the tax rate to reduce the taxes, that money came from. We applied it to the tax rate to reduce the taxes, that money came from all the different departments and excess revenues that we took in through. Linda Peters and other things through the town.
I guess what concerns me is with the road budget, if, you know, you only take it twenty thousand, that doesn't really concern me, but. When we're talking about a million three bond, and there's, you know, and he, and we've returned a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
That would, I would have a concern with.
Yeah.
Because we could, you, we could use that money to do some paving next year, and we could lower our one point three million dollar.
Oh, that's where Jeff was actually going, that's where he was going, whatever money he has left over, he wants to encumber that money to buy cheap, not cheap, but less expensive um, paving. And get it at a disused prices, if he has money left over.
And what I think what Nate is saying is, you're talking about going for a bond for the one point three million.
Mm-hmm.
But if we returning a hundred and fifty thousand from his budget this year, and last year he did a hundred, you know, why isn't he using his full budget?
Well, it's, it's, it's labor, it's uh, weather, it's all, all sorts of things that you encumber, which, I mean, there are all sorts of costs.
I'm not questioning that, you might be, but I'm questioning why wouldn't it lower the one point three million dollar bond?
It may.
That number was not solid.
Right, it may.
That number was not solid.
From what I, from what I see in construction means, that price is gonna go up.
Oh.
Because tar has doubled in price.
Totally concur, totally concur, so we may not get the big bang for the buck, we're, we're.
No, no, may not.
Right, and I concur with you.
Okay, thank you Nate, anybody else that they have uh, public comment for the non-public? Lean? Okay, that being said. Per RSA. Ninety-one dash eight, three, Roman numeral two, paragraph A, we are gonna go into a non-public, take a two-minute recess.